You know, there is a little bit of flexibility in there, but we do stick to our disciplines on that. And, you know, at some point, we will, we do hope to recoup some of those losses. We're working on recommendations right now on when to, by statute, we can only have 45% in equities. Right now, we only have about 35%. When do we want to start moving some of those back into equities?
All right. I just, I was just curious because I know-
Yeah, a large majority is government-backed.
Yeah, government-wise, okay. Thank you.
Mayor Johnson?
We seem to be slipping into discussion of the police pension fund, which I see a second from the end. And I understand Jordan Anderson issued a letter to the city council regarding their funding requests over and above what you have in the budget here, and they wanted to make a presentation to the city councils, my understanding. So perhaps that should be a discussion for a future meeting.
Okay.
And will that letter be distributed to the council?
I thought it already was, but if it hasn't been, it will be. And I, it's probably appropriate that the same date, the same meeting, we talk about the early retirement, that we bring the pen, the pension committee in and address both issues at the same time.
Mr. Cadala?
Chief, one question on line item 42003, communications. What is the bulk of that $13,000 jump, which just about doubles, almost doubles from where we were last year?
Right, that's actually that program with regards to CTY Connect on the reverse 911. And that's the, the cost split there.
You're too. Got another question. Last week, the mayor mentioned all the union employees are getting 68% raises. But when I asked you, I asked you about that, actually, right after that meeting, I had one of the residents was sitting in the audience, he goes, "What are you guys doing giving away 68% every year? What's going on?" I had to explain it to him because I had already talked to the chief. Actually, manager Douthwait also said tonight, 7% increases. But, correct me if I'm wrong, chief, when we talked, your salaries, you got basically a handful of employees that have, are not at the top scale, so they would get that cost of living plus a step increase. So maybe you got five or six employees that are going to get that kind of pay raise?
I can tell you that on the sworn staff, there's probably about six there, and then on the civilian staff, there's probably about another four to five over there.
Who are they not top or about it?
That are not at top. Keep in mind that there's a smoothing here that goes on with this, and our total salaries, I think, are around 4.3.
So that's, basically, that's what's going up this year is 4.3%.
Right through there.
And not the-
No.
6% to 8% there.
Not in total.
Any other questions on police? Police and fire commissioners? I don't see anything on this.
There's really not a whole lot to talk about on that one.
No, they got money in there to run a sergeant promotion exam. They have to run that because they have to have a list. Okay? So any questions on that?
Mayor Johnson?
I was curious on this one. Why does it say one full-time and one part-time?
I got the sheet and I see one part-time employee.
Where do you see a full-
2008, it says one full-time, and then 2009, 2010, one part-time.
Uh, can you direct-
Who would be the full-time employee of-
Where are you?
Police and fire commissioner?
Page one. I think that's probably a typo. They've only had one part-time employee there.
That's actually the full-time personnel schedule for the clerk's office.
What is it?
It's the clerk's office. Full-time personnel schedule. My apologies, my cut and pace must not have taken properly. We'll fix that for the next time.
Okay, moving on, we'll go to the engineer department.
The reason you see the zeros in fiscal year '09 is because they were budgeted out of city services at that time. And when we made the reorganization, we brought them over as its own department. So there wasn't any money to budget in the past years. It was all out of a different fund. So this really is the first year of this new full-time or fully dedicated department out of the general fund.
Any questions on the engineer? Then, Mr. Charky?
Yeah, I, I still have a problem with this after talking to you, Wally. When we, when I, when I've been pushing for civil engineer for a number of years, I was, I kept being told that, well, the city should be at least 25,000 people before you have to hire a full-time civil engineer. We're still, you know, between 13,000 and 14,000, and now we're talking about two full-time and one part-time. And the part-time is a intern. My son is an engineer, and when he was an intern, he got paid for it too, but it was more a learning process. He gained more than he was paid in money. They just, there's just so much they can do. I think having two full-time engineers for a town our size should be sufficient, especially when we are shipping some of that work out to other consultant engineer firms. And I'm just, I'm just wondering if we need that many.
Well, if I could make a couple of comments on that. First of all, this is no change from what we've had the last two years. We feel that the engineering intern is just a terrific bargain. The person that we've had with us for three years now, who goes to engineering school, is really, it's almost like getting another engineer for basically $11 an hour, or, you know, roughly that for his salary. Someone we can put out on construction sites all summer, keep an eye on things. Again, it's just a great cost. If we were going to hire a consultant to do that same work, we would probably be paying five times that amount. We do have a pretty heavy workload this year on the construction side, design as well. Even if we stagger the projects, we're probably going to have three going on at a time, three major ones. So you can see that, you know, having three people and three projects, we really, you know, that's what we need, otherwise just shuffling back and forth and doing a lot more part-time work. And we still have all the office work we have to do at the same time as that. We can't spend 100% of our time in the field, any one of us. We still have phone calls, drainage complaints, flood plan information, plan reviews, permit reviews. So to have the flexibility of an intern, someone we can put out there all the time, who doesn't have any, let's say, regular work to do, really helps us out a lot. And again, we feel it's a terrific bargain for that cost compared to what we would pay for a degreed engineer or a consultant to do similar work. It's pretty common for most municipalities to have, to have the interns because they're such a good bargain. You know, we just feel it's, it's really just a terrific value to have that person.
The three programs, if I may continue?
Sorry.
Three programs again were, what, community rating system is one? Are these the ones listed here?
Well, I'm talking about three construction projects we would have on any given town, which would require, you know-
What are those three again?
Well, the projects for this year, just as an example, we'll have our roadway resurfacing project, we will have school street reconstruction, we'll have Stonem Water Main, those three will probably be going on at the same time. Later in the summer, we'll have our sidewalk maintenance program, our alley reconstruction program. We have two other, other water main projects that we're going to farm out to consultants, but we'll still have to do some level of work keeping an eye on that. So, but in the initial phase, it's the resurfacing program, the school street reconstruction, and the Stonem Water Main that we think will be going on, at least through June and July for both of them.
Continue, Dan, if you have any-
Just one more. I think I talked to our city manager about the bill that did pass the House and was going to the Senate on wastewater treatment plants, rehabbing them and so forth. I was just wondering, have we made any plans or done anything about contacting the correct people to talk to, to get maybe some grant funds from that?
I've been doing some research on that in terms of what it, what it involves, but it's going to be difficult to apply for grants until we're ready to actually start the construction. And I don't see that that construction's starting probably for at least another year or two until we get the feasibility study done and the actual design, and we decide what we want to do with the expansion, and then actually have the design itself. We might be eligible for some money for, for engineering design.
That's what I was thinking.
I haven't deter, I haven't been able to find that out yet for sure.
Okay. I wonder if you can follow up on that, forward to the design and engineer?
It's on my list.
It would be helpful. Thank you.
Christine Winger?
I just wanted to point out, you know, I've been asking for this for several, or a couple of years at least, of the headcount from year to year. And I have, finally have a nice, neat way of looking at this. It's concise for each department. So I thank you for putting together this budget in a very clear format with the org charts as well. That's how it helps us understand each department and how many people we have had and are budgeting for. And for this particular fund, I see the city engineer, civil engineer, and the potential intern. And Mr. Graff, where do you, or, Mr. Manager, where does Mr. Graff fit on the org charts? Is he in public works or is he in community development?
There ought to be, Brad helped me out here because I don't have it right in front of me. There ought to be a separate organizational chart just for engineering itself. Shouldn't there?
That's where we're on right now.
I believe at one time it was split between departments, but now they moved it all under one.
The city services. And when we reorganized last fall, or last winter, I split those off. And John Kramer's now handling the public work side, and Dave is handling the engineering side in a separate department.
So then, would Mr. Graff be the first back city engineer? And there's only one other, a civil engineer working underneath there?
Mr. Graff would be the city engineer, and then we have a full-time civil engineer, and then an engineering intern who works during the summer.
Okay. So Mr. Graff is essentially a working city engineer, not a supervisor of an engineer?
A hard-working engineer.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead. Okay, and, sure.
All the designs that we do in-house, I don't delegate that off. I mean, I actively do all those, and I actively do inspections as well. So I'm, we divide up the work between us, and we're, we're both out in the field quite a bit, and we do the designs ourselves.
Okay, thank you. And, and a follow-up to that, I agree with Alderman Shaki on, on the intern. I know they can be economical and potentially valuable in that way. However, I just feel that we have different other departments that might be able to overlap in, in that position for the summer. I know we've talked about the, we've said economic development, there's none going on, we better not do a study, we better eliminate that, and, and then we hear there's no request for building tickets in the in-band. So if we can use either the economic development coordinator position to backfill a little bit this summer to more of the task-oriented work, or the part-time code enforcer, it sounds like that position was stepping up due to extra, extra time, I believe we decided. Can we use another department to backfill this position?
No. No, these are engineers. These are highly technical people, and somebody at a community development doesn't have the technical expertise to be able to function as an engineer out there in terms of overseeing construction projects. I mean, it's a completely different discipline.
Okay. So then, can you refresh my memory on the intern position? What are they going to be doing?
Their main job will be overseeing the construction projects, and that will be basically full-time out in the field watching the contractors. There are a lot of other things that the interns do, and just one example is our address map was created by our intern last year, and it's something that was, was sitting on the shelf for a long time. That was a rainy day project for him, and he was able to complete it during those days when there was no work going on in the field. He also did quite a bit of work organizing our files. But other than the rainy day situations, he's full-time construction inspection. Also, we had him do a lot of surveying work.
Okay. And when we say construction projects, are we saying the, the roadways that we're going to be working on and that sort of thing?
Well, the first three that'll be going out are school street reconstruction, the annual roadway resurfacing program, and the Stonem Street Water Main.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, on the intern, kind of nervous. If, if the school street project's going on, he's going to be the engineer on site, is he, is he fully equipped to handle that job, or is it going to become another Montclair Street where we had all kinds of problems? I mean-
He doesn't run the job, and I spend a great deal of time on these projects myself, as well as the civil engineer. I, I wouldn't say he runs the job. I say he oversees things and comes back to us with questions. And again, we stop out there multiple times a day on all these, but he's out there full-time. If, if there's something more dicey or more difficult being done, then certainly we'll be out there full-time as well. Or if school street is too much for him, we would shift him over to the resurfacing project, which is a little bit less intensive from a technical standpoint. So I, by no means does he run the project, though.
Mr. Cadala?
Am I seeing this right? You're looking at $8,000 for having this intern throughout the summer, and it's only the summer, right? And it's only $8,000?
No, that includes the summer, and he's also, for the last two years over Christmas vacation, has been here as well.
But this number covers the full year's salary, whatever you're paying?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Johnson?
What would be an example of overtime in your department?
The only overtime is any that the civil engineer would work. There were, I don't think we would spend that amount. I don't know how much we spent last year. The only occasions where she worked overtime, there were a couple of days when a contractor was working on Saturday that she came in last year, and a couple of times when they worked later in the day that she covered. But that said, anything else of working late, I would cover myself, and I, I don't get paid overtime, but that's all that it's for.
Okay. I, I have one question. And, and maybe this sounds little, but the $1,000 for office furniture, chairs, and file cabinets. When you were at the Public Works Building, when you were moved over there, I believe this council approved to buy all new office furniture for that office when you were moved in there. What happened to all that office furniture?
It, it's still there, and the offices are set for someone to move into them.
Okay, but have we, what file cabinet are we looking for in that? Have we looked in the Public Works facilities for, for file cabinets and chairs and all that? I will tell you guys on the city council, there are chairs and, and file cabinets and walls and all that over at the Public Works Building in storage that still have wrappers on them. At least the walls are.
I think the intent here was to get everything to match and not have everything look so piecemeal. I think we all know there's chairs and desks and file cabinets. That was the intent. With respect to the file cabinet, I think since we put this together, we've utilized some of the existing files and rearranged some things, so that probably isn't necessary. The chairs were hand-me-down chairs, and we were looking to get new chairs.
One more. The uniforms, $1,000. You have two or two and a half people. It seems a little high. I don't, I don't know what our uniform allowance is for a police officer, but-
You know what? I just carried over what, what we've done in the past out of city services was $500 per person, as I was told, and I just carried that over to the next year. But if that's not in line with policy, I apologize for that because I just, that was my understanding, that it was $500 per person.
Well, let me ask the manager then, or Jeffrey, who is over in charge of that. Is that our $500 per person, per year? That seems a little pricey.
600? Six, is that, 600 dollars per year?
That's getting worse.
What is that?
What is that, what is that?
Public Works employees, the collective bargaining unit right now is $600 per year, which they can carry 100 of it over and add on to the next year. And that amount has always been allocated to city services, non-union personnel as well.
All right. And on the non-union side, what would you do for $500 per person on a yearly basis?
Well, now that you've called that to my attention, I think what I'd like to do is go back and take another look at that. Because the, the only uniforms per se are the T-shirts and jackets with the Wooddale logo on them. And I'd want to get back with Brad and see what is a realistic number. That may not be realistic. And if you'd indulge me for two weeks, I'd check that out and get back. And if you, we need to pare that down, we will.
Okay, anything else? All right. You think we could get through Public Works at like 10:30 here? All right, well then-
I mean, just in the general fund, you're looking at administration, street, vehicle maintenance, storm sewer maintenance. You're talking about four tabs.
Then my, my suggestion that we call it tonight, I mean, I don't want to get involved in another, unless you got a short one.
Well, I'm, let's, let's, let me take you up on that. Let's knock off, let's do 20 more minutes and start with Road and Bridge Fund, Motor Fuel Town Fund, Narcotics For- for sure, because those are pretty much-
Those are, those are the easy ones.
Those are no-brainers. So if we go to Road and Bridge Fund-
Road and Bridge.
This is pretty much, you know, a, a no-brainer. We get Road and Bridge money from the state. We're obligated to spend it on certain kind of, of uses. And as you can see, the number has come down substantially from this past year.
Can I just ask one question on the Royal Oaks gas lights? We paid the Royal Oaks area, we paid $7,500. Are those actually ours, or is that the developments? When they, some, I mean, I, just no more?
The mayor actually might have a little bit more information on it, but through my readings, I found that technically we do have, we are required to provide the gas service for the gas lights, and they provide the maintenance.
Actually, that predates me, too. That goes back a few years.
Well, I, I'm just looking at, and I'm not picking on subdivision, but if we paying $7,500 for, for gas, okay, and I know gas is going to go up again, why can't we look at putting different lights in there that's going to be cheaper? I mean, I mean, why should we have to, you're right, when the road project comes forward, that needs to be looked at. Because why should we pay for the gas for, for this, that certain area? I mean, I, I just can't answer that question here.
We can look into it. Like I said, I remember talking with staff, and some staff that has some longevity with Public Works, and they did point me in the direction, and I did research it, and I believe I am correct, that the agreement was that we would pay for the gas and they would pay for the light.
Because I don't think the city put those lights in. I'll tell you that right now, I guarantee that. All right, anything else on that?
Christine Winger?
I realize we discussed this in the capital improvement program, but I'd like for us to refresh my memory on line item 42041, in the Elizabeth Drive Bridge. We had budgeted for it in this fiscal year. We're not planning on doing it, and it's not in next year. Where does it stand, and, and why is it getting pushed out again?
It's in the CIP. It's not in the operating budget. It's in the capital project budget as one of the projects.
Which we'll review-
Which, pardon me?
Which we'll review that fund when we get to it.
Right. Well, you, to some extent, you've already reviewed it when you passed the CIP a month ago, but you'll see it again in the capital projects fund.
Right, I agree. Okay, thank you. And then also, okay, and then same with roadway preventative maintenance.
Right, that's all on capital projects.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay.
X Fund, which is the next tab.
Can't do anything with that because, you know, we can use it for roads and road projects, right?
Yeah, we maintain streetlights, traffic signals. We buy salt.
Okay. Mr. Newsill?
Just one. Under the snow and ice control, that salt and liquid anti-icing agents, is that if we purchase that new machine for Public Works that we need that much?
No, this is just for purchasing the current amounts that we do now, one being bulk road salt, the other being liquid calcium chloride, which is what we use to, when the road and the air temperatures drop below freezing, we mix our bulk road salt with liquid cal chloride.
So it's not, it doesn't have to do with anything I saw in one of the funds or the budgets here that you're talking about purchasing a mixer machine?
Correct. We did place that in as a expanded budget item, but no, this is not any portion of that.
Almost struck.
Two questions. First of all, in that question, one, one is just a comment. In talking to the Addison Township person in charge over there, he was saying that they had more than enough salt. They had plenty of salt, and we probably could have purchased some from them at a much lower price than we did through the other outlet. Secondly, in today's paper, they, they said that they're pushing something through Springfield right now to reimburse municipalities that did pay more than the contract state price. And I just wonder if we're doing anything with that as well.
We're monitoring that bill. I'm aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
So bring me back to that salt. Is that going to be enough for this year? You went from 120 down to 110. Isn't salt price staying the same price?
At current prices, 110 would provide us with the same level of service that we did this year.
All right, but that's without, but that may come down if we get the salt done.
Correct, because we would reduce the amount of transportation costs that we would have for doing staggered deliveries, which currently we have.
Thank you. Anything else on that?
Mayor Johnson?
Sorry, going back one fun, back to Road and Bridge. Under the revenue side, why is there a listing for mobile homes in Road and Bridge?
Sorry, Mayor, we passed that fund.
If you go on to the treasurer's website and punch in, pull up all of our revenue codes, we have one that's called Mobile Homes Current Year and Prior Year Taxes. Primarily, though, those are phased out now, and they're just rolled into the general property tax levy. But back in '07, we did have a slight refund of a property tax bill that someone had contested, and so we did have to show it as a contra-revenue in there because it originally came in through those channels. So that's pretty much zero nowadays, but since I believe we do have a, a small number of those in town, we did at one time have a levy line titled as such.
We did the tourism fund already. We're now going to, we did that.
Narcotics forfeit fund.
That's for the dog. Pays for the dogs and all that. Any questions on that? About those and everything else that's on there. Okay. Got some question for that? We'll, we'll move on, and if you got to come back to, we'll come back to. Mayor, you have a question on this fund?
On the income side, that $5,000- On the income side, that $5,000 grant that we received from Petco or Pet something or other?
That was melt bones for, you know.
Thank you.
That's not really reflected in this account. That's segregated in its own separate account and I think that Brad can kind of tell you where that's located, but we will be encumbering some of that. I can tell you right now, Sergeant Del Carlo and Officer O'Neil have been very proactive. We were going to pay for our actual food for the dog for that. I'll give a plug to Wilson Pet Supplies. They are providing us with the food for the dog at no cost. So we were going to use that for that. As time goes on, we might defer some of the other costs for the dog to that, but that is not contained in this fund.
Any other questions on that? Oh, I'm sorry, Brad, go ahead.
Not the correct, Frank, but it is in the Narcotics Forfeiture Fund. But since it is only to be used explicitly for the dog, it's actually on the balance sheet side of the fund in a liability account that we would draw down as those expenses come. So it's not reflected anywhere in this budget since this is only the income statement side of the fund. It's on the left side of the equation currently instead of the right side.
And just one thing in closing, the reason for that is this fund is subject to audits from the Illinois State Police, so that's why we kind of do it that way.
Christine Winger.
This sounds like a nice donation. Can we just hear a little bit more about how it came about and who was the donor and why?
Mr. Wilson. They were previously located in the industrial park off of AEC. They've been very supportive of some of our dogs in the past. They relocated out of Wooddale. Sergeant Del Carlo and Ryan O'Neil kind of reapproached them. We have given them some recognition privately. We went over to their firm, we presented them with a plaque. They wanted to do it that way and it's a long-term relationship. They've since moved out of Wooddale and they're continuing to support us.
Thank you.
Anything else on that? Okay.
This you've seen before as part of the CIP. The revenue side is utility tax revenue and the 1% non-home rule sales tax, $100,000 in a transfer from the Road and Bridge Fund. And then on the second page are all of the projects which you approved three, four weeks ago, which is making a transfer from one document to another. And I guess the only other thing I would add is if you look at that second page of the line item detail, our capital improvements are going from a million sum a year to, to 4 million a year. We're really ramping up our level of investment in the infrastructure.
Mr. Newzil.
Can you refresh my memory, Brad? I don't recall this 100,000 for IT infrastructure. Is that on the Springbrook again?
New phone system. That was on the capital project.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Shark.
Can you tell us what those storm improvements are?
The, well, we had a few different storm sewer improvements. These are all consultant studies. One of them was $50,000 to look at detention basins and other watershed problems. And that's going to be referred to the Stormwater Commission to make recommendations on which one of those we would do. There was also $100,000 for the, for the streets around the creeks south of Irving Park, which is Oakwood, Forest View, Harvey, and Edge Brook, to look at the drainage in there. That also included looking at the pavement section as well, but drainage was a big component of it. The other part was there were two drainage problems on Cedar that we were looking to correct, one in the north end, one in the south end. And the last one was the Wood Lane Court Detention Basin, which we've been getting a lot of complaints that there's never any water in it. So we wanted to look into what we could do to fixing that situation.
Mr. Kinnate.
Line number 48061, transfer to commuter parking lot. I know this is supposed to be in this year's budget for the train station. I don't see carried over to next year. I don't see it in the parking lot improvement. Get a little nervous here. This is not a shell game, I hope.
Well, once the money's moved, there's no need to rebudget to move the money again in the next fiscal year. So the money's already been moved in the current year that we're in. And so the money's just sitting in the commuter parking.
Shouldn't it be reflected somewhere, some line in somewhere other than, well, as of April 30th, this budget that we're working on for this year, 2009, is over, right?
Correct.
There's nothing, so whatever's done after that in the new fiscal year, shouldn't that be reflected in a line item somewhere?
It is in the commuter parking lot.
I didn't see it there.
This is the money that went out from the Capital Projects Fund to the Commuter Parking Fund this fiscal year. And if you flip over to the Commuter Parking Lot Fund, you'll see it booked as a revenue transfer from the Capital Projects Fund this fiscal year. So it's money out of one fund into another fund. And then we've rebudgeted the construction of the new train station for next year in the commuter parking fund.
This is where I'm confused because it's reflected in the projected 2009 in the commuter parking lot fund, but it's not mentioned anywhere in the 2010.
That's because it already occurred. We made, we made that transfer this year. We don't have to budget for it again. That money's still sitting, is now sitting in the commuter parking fund, waiting for us to build the train station.
Which we're going to do in a couple of weeks, I hope, before.
That's up to the council.
Okay, I, you know, it was just my understanding that once 2009 budget, once that time period of fiscal year is over, this budget is no longer in effect. And then the 2010, the new fiscal year, and I didn't, when I see all those zeros there, I get concerned.
It's, it's in there. We made that transfer in fiscal year 2009 and the money is sitting in the commuter parking lot fund, waiting for us to spend it on the train station next fiscal year.
Okay.
And since we had, the money had already physically been moved, what needed to get rebudgeted was the actual cost of building the train station, which if you look in the commuter parking lot, you'll see this year it's at 1.2 million and next year it's at 1.1. So we physically gave, physically moved the money, but now we just had to rebudget the expenditure of actually building the train station. So it's there. Nothing to worry about. It's there.
Anything else? Mr. Newzil.
We've got the money in there for the salt dome. I thought the salt dome was more expensive than 75,000.
The 75,000 is for land acquisition next fiscal year and the rest of the money is programmed for the following fiscal year in the CIP. So this is just the land acquisition.
If we have to buy it or whatever we decide to.
However it works out, they're still in negotiations.
Right, right.
That's right.
Mayor Johnson.
I see under Forestry, we have 15,000. Traditionally, we've been spending more than that. Maybe that's somewhere else in the budget as part of our Tree City USA. I think we used to expend like 20,000 to remove dead trees and 20,000 to add new trees. Is that somewhere else?
We have two harbors now, so they.
I only see 15,000 here.
The 15,000 was for the Emerald Ashbore forestation that we identified in the CIP. In the Public Works Streets Budget, you will find tree replacement located in that budget as well.
One. Mr. Lowton.
Regarding Emerald Ashbore removal and reforestation, Mr. Kramer, I faxed you a newspaper article and you were going to do some, and I know you have done some research into it to find out if grant money is available. Have you reached anybody who knows if there's anything other than low-cost loans?
Correct. I can summarize that for you. I actually sent a memo to the assistant manager today that will come out in next week's information items, which lists not only the article that was located in the Brookfield Riverside newspaper that you sent me that spoke of Senator Durbin appropriating $34 million for Emerald Ashbore control within Illinois, or excuse me, from the feds to local state governments. I.